Board meeting to order. And the just wanted to give a couple of remarks on the front end. Um, the the floodplain uh study that's been going on is something that um. The property owners association board has been following now for some time and um. I thought it would be um good uh for us to learn where the where we are on that study. It has um. Impact on how we do the roads. Correct, Mr. Centoni?
Yes.
And it also has a potential impact on new new buyers and it has potential impact. On our current current owners. Uh so I reached out to Randy here and um. We talked it over and we thought, yeah, it'd be a good thing to do is to have this and get an update of where we are. Um, and Catfish, who's with us here, is a big part of this program. But tha- that's the purpose of this is for the board to know uh more about where we are on the study, keep us updated on that. Uh so that we can inform all the owners uh through our communications as to, you know, how this is working. So that's why we're doing it. It's a good thing to do. Um, so what I want to do with this session is um sort of a single item session here is. Um, have Randy introduce um the folks that he's he's brought together for us and Randy, thank you for doing that. Um, and um, we have um uh folks from both the um. Uh floodplain studies and also from Public Works. Um, and Mr. Lotoski was gonna join us and um. But he can't, and I hope he's feeling pretty good after his oral surgery here today. And our our best wishes to him. So let me just turn over to Randy so you can introduce your crew and then tell us what you got going on, please.
Okay, I have with me little Catfish already introduced herself. She's uh my assistant that takes care of FEMA FEMA issues. And I believe that's all we have in the county unless someone else has logged on from maybe public works. Oh, yes, we have.
Hello, everyone. So um, yeah, my name is Sergio. I'm with Mojave County Public Works. I'm the interim engineer manager um out here. And I'm also joined by Steve Best. He's the superintendent. So um, we, yeah, we. Um, sorry, we're a little bit late. We weren't let in until probably after the introductions were connected, but. Um, yeah, we're we're here with uh specific, any specific questions?
Thank you, Sergio. So Randy, we'll keep it with you.
Okay, so we prepared a little presentation to give some history. And give give an overview of the floodplain situation and in your area.
Okay.
So we've got some slides and I will, if I'm successful, share my screen.
So Kelly, do you um allow him to share, please?
Yeah, not sure I know how to do this.
Kelly's just gotta open you up on that.
Oh, I'm on it.
Hello, Captain.
Let you share it now.
Okay, Randy, you can move on forward now.
I think you can.
Um, okay, can you see my screen by any chance?
Not yet, no.
I'm sure I've got to uh. Click. Oh, I get it. I get it. Here we go. Okay, I think I'm sharing. Can you see uh I've got a slide?
There it is.
Yeah, okay, there we go. All right, so the flood control district administers floodplanes for FEMA. In this area and it's part of our uh. Agreement or program that we have with FEMA that goes back uh several, quite a few decades. And then just uh for those who may not know, Public Works actually administers the roads, the public roads in that area. So. Our portion is just the floodplanes. So a little bit of history. Then the floodplanes were first delineated back in the eighties. And the areas in blue that you see. Are the floodplanes that were created a long time ago and they're approximate A zones FEMA calls them. Approximate because they were not determined by any uh detailed engineering study. Uh, I'm pretty sure how they looked at is they'd get aerial photos or USGS quad maps and they see a streamline and they get a magic marker and they. They kind of mark it up. That's kind of how those floodplanes were delineated before. Uh, because it was easy and a detailed study is is rather expensive. But that's the that's the maps and that's the way they've been for quite a few years. Um, so they're approximate. They do not accurately represent flooding, but it's the best guess based on the information they had available. And um I should mention that we can uh we, there's our, there's our. Our email address. So if you have parcel specific questions, we can zoom in and in detail. Um, because this is, the scale is much too big. But if you want to know your specific parcel, you can contact us directly. So, a few years back, uh we were able to get some money in the form of a grant. From FEMA. And so we did what we called Phase One, our Yucca Risk Map Phase One. And this is the area north of you as you. You can see on their I forty and towards the bottom of the picture. There's the proving grounds, the test site. So you're south of that, but we. For technical reasons, we were starting on the north end and we were we're working our way south. This phase one study is almost totally complete. It started about five years ago. Uh, and mapping, the actual maps will be revised by FEMA before too long. But this was a detailed study with uh detailed engineering analysis. And like I say, this took, these things take several years to get through the system and be checked and approved and and published. And to illustrate what these studies do. Uh, this green, the area in blue are the old map floodplanes. And the area in green are the floodplanes determined by a detailed engineering analysis. So there are some areas in Phase One. That are now being mapped into a floodplain that weren't before because we have more accurate information. This is the kind of study that we'll be doing for your area. Actually, we just started started that area. So this is Phase Two, which includes, I believe, all of the Santa Fe Ranch. We started this study in January. We have a consultant doing a very detailed two dimensional hydrology model, very sophisticated. And they they're just getting into it. It's it's still too early to have any kind of results yet. Uh, oh, and we should mention that this funding. Is from, is ARPA money, is federal money that. Uh District Five Supervisor has allocated for this project. So we're very grateful for that. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to to study the floodplanes in this area in any more detail. So the current status for your areas, we still have the old maps that are approximate. And but a more detailed study is underway and schedule wise, it. It'll be several years before we have any real information on this one. These areas, the geology of these areas are a little bit different. Phase One is a little more established. The washes are more incised. Uh, this area, the washes are still, we call them young, geologically speaking. But they are much more likely to move around. You get a a big storm, it'll bring out a lot of sediment. Fill in some areas and these washes can move. And so, and it's because of erosion and sedimentation. Uh, so there's a lot more uncertainty in this area, but our two dimensional study will greatly improve our understanding of where the water really goes. Um, in a in the hundred year storm. So we expect our data to be submitted to FEMA in about a year. And it'll take several years to get checked and and mapped. But once FEMA accepts the information, which would be in a couple of years. Even before they're mapped, we will typically start. Uh administering these floodplanes. Any development. Which is a FEMA word that means any, you touch the ground, you move any dirt. Any kind of development in a floodplain requires a permit. And that's our responsibility. And once we have this better data, we'll be uh using it to administer that. So. What exactly does it mean for us to administer a floodplain? Any development, like I said, needs a floodplain use permit. We just call them an F U P. And in this area. As I understand, the interest primarily here is the roadways. Any grading or any kind of moving dirt in the mapped floodplanes. Requires the floodplain use permit in. And so, but there is one in place. It was issued about four years ago. And so there is an existing floodplain use permit allowing. Maintenance of these roads. It with that are that are crossed by flooding, by floodplanes. Uh, this F U P was updated or amended a few years ago in twenty twenty three. Specifically addressing the question of of roadside ditches. And dip sections wherever water historically crosses the road. Um, this floodplain use permit was amended or updated to allow working in the roadway to allow water to. Uh, to cross the road. And the general rule for floodplanes to be permitted or working floodplanes to be permitted is safety. And diversions. That is, we we can't allow historic floodplain or floodwater. Flow paths to be diverted into. Uh, places where the never, the water's never gone. That. If that were proposed, we would not approve a that grading, that floodplain use permit. Uh, but uh two years ago, the then director looked at this and updated it to allow for. Working in the roadways in order to maintain the historic flow patterns. So, and that's, that's what it stands. We're to, in summary, we're updating the map. So that we have better information to work with. And we are administering and we have issued floodplain permits to work to maintain roads where they're crossed by floodplanes. I'd be happy to answer any questions and hopefully I can give you any information that you need that I did not already cover.
Thank you, Randy. So with that being said, just one question, did did Cat or uh any folks here from Public Works have anything they wanted to add to that?
I don't have anything to add. Randy did a great job.
He did an excellent job. Okay. Maybe we can stop stop sharing now so we can see each other.
Yeah, just a, I had some, uh, Public Works also doesn't have any any further comments. Good job, Randy.
Thank you. Appreciate that. There we go. Now we're back.
Okay.
All right, so board members, does anybody on the board have any questions for Randy on that? No? So I, let me, let me ask this question. I had, I had this, what? What kind of impact can can owners expect um as this floodplain? New floodplain. So it looks like it's expanding. Uh, somebody wants to to build within that floodplain. What will be required of them?
Okay, whenever development is proposed, whenever anyone just wants to build in a floodplain. They need to go through the neural development process. If the they're moving more than a hundred cubic yards of dirt, they need a grading permit from the building department. And as part of that permit application, they'll send it to my department to review. Uh, we'll check it for the safety issues that I talked about. And any buildings are elevated high enough that any residential structures are safe from flooding. And once we okay it, they can issue the grading permit.
Okay, is 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 there any um impact as far as insurance on that property?
Uh, yes, uh. Yeah, that's the other side of the uh, the FEMA issues here is the is the insurance. If they. If there's a federal loan on any kind of construction, the lender will almost always require flood insurance. And then the premiums that someone would pay for that flood insurance will depend on. Uh, the finished floor of their house or their structure. Um, and there are a lot of other factors. This has been in flux lately, the last couple of years. But if the house is elevated or farther away from a a stream or a wash, then the premiums would be lower. If the uh proposed house or structure is not in a floodplain. Insurance may not be required, but it is, you can always buy flood insurance.
Yeah.
And the premium would be based on on these factors I talked about.
Okay, so so if if somebody built. Floodplain map shows them outside the floodplain, but now the floodplain looks like it's expanding. And all of a sudden it includes them in that new floodplain map, what kind of impact would that have on the owner?
Okay, so, yep, interesting question. Uh, so first of all, the new study will not necessarily increase the floodplanes. In some cases it will, in some cases it might actually reduce the floodplanes.
Okay.
Uh, in a few years when we get the preliminary data, we'll start administering using that data. So someone. Would say is proposing to build a house in a certain spot that's not currently mapped. But we can tell from our hydrology study that there's uh flooding danger, the potential for problems. We will insist that the finished floor be elevated uh to a certain elevation. Even though it isn't technically mapped in yet.
Good advice, yeah. Really good advice. Um, John, did, did you have any questions as far as the roadways are concerned?
No.
Kind of, kind of, I I I know that um Randy um Public Works came out when we got that uh last permit. And worked with this on the crest curves and the dip curves and it seems like that's all uh worked out really good. Sergio, did you have any? Any comments on that?
Uh, and is that the um, the essentially um. Fortifying of um some or improvements on on some of those low water crossings in Butch Cassidy? Is that what we're, what you're referring to about forward?
Well, that plus uh Paul came out and looked at how uh we were grading the road and how we were putting the dip curves and crest curves in. And I recall it was a good positive um conversation. I just wondered if there was any further thing you could tell us about the, for all the roads. We. We have John, what, four hundred and fifty miles of roads. We're doing something like that?
Yes.
Right. I I have, I I don't have any comment regarding the the um, the 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 work that you guys are doing out there. Um, I I would just um. Want to emphasize that Butch Cassidy, there 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 used to be a permit where um the county and. Uh, the PLA had an agreement where you guys would come out and 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 blade um. Throughout a regular maintenance period. Um, so um, we 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 typically try to blade every six weeks. I think you. Six to, six to eight weeks. Um, you guys would be coming in between and 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 kind of just um. Assisting us with with the bleeding operations in Butch Cassidy. I do want to point out that. Um, back in twenty twenty three, that that permit did expire. Um, and you guys decided not to, not to pursue renewal. Of that. So we we are back in operation just doing that six to eight week of maintenance. Um. Um, aside from that, um, you guys already know the improvements in Alamo. Um, hopefully everything's working out well. Uh, there was a recent storm event out there. Uh, we're we're working on, continue to to work on. Improving the 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 ditches out there so that water flows adequately. Um. Aside from that, um, you guys are allowed to go ahead and do that self maintenance. It's resolution twenty sixteen dash one one six. Um, for that self maintenance. Um, as long as Randy pointed out that you guys are not um. Changing the the flow of the existing um, the existing uh floodplain. So. Um, with that being said, um, that's that's really all the the comments I have.
Okay, thank, thank you, Phil. Sergio, John, do you, do you recall that twenty twenty three on on Butch?
I do.
We used to grade Butch, but uh. We don't do it anymore. There was an issue with the insurance and. And with J and K didn't want to have responsibility, so we just let the county do it.
Okay.
Every six weeks. And they come out when we request them. We have an issue with Butch Cassidy from Santa Fe Ranch to Crystal Springs because population increase. It that three miles stretch tends to get driven a lot, so it gets extremely wash party. And so I have Melissa get a hold of Steve and he usually. Get somebody out to grade that for us in between the six week intervals.
Okay, so it sounds, it sounds like we got a working plan then.
Yes.
All right.
And and I do want to add um, but. If if any additional maintenance is being proposed on any county roadway maintained, sorry, any county maintained roadway to either. Being tertiary or regularly maintained, we do, going back to what John was 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 specifying on the permit. We do request that the contractor or whoever's doing the bleeding operations does have to submit a uh. Is essentially an insurance um, just. Um, to make sure that the that the county's not liable for any. Any improvements that are done out there by by a by a private or a a contractor out there. So. Um, we we could possibly look, if you guys want to go ahead and 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 continue going in that um route um. Previous to twenty twenty three, um, we could um reconsider, reconsider um doing the that. Creditway application, but we would require a uh that the that the insurance be be provided to us.
And Melissa, if we wanted to go that direction, we could just add a rider on, right?
It would be uh something we would announce TLC for, and he had it before and didn't mind providing it, but the. Way decided that they, like John said, that we we did not want our contractor having to subsidize the grading. And so it was discontinued.
Okay. And everybody's gonna get a chance to ask their questions here. I'm just ans- ass- asking the ones I kind of have in my mind right now. The on on Alamo, just out of curiosity, with the new pavement work that was done there. Is that keeping the water in in the uh traditional pathways or has that changed in any form or fashion?
So we did have a um, a, an engineered placet. Uh, we had a hydrologist specialist and uh the the. The engineer that that designed the roadway, they looked at all the um, they actually did a a study prior to construction to make sure that. Um, you know, what washes were were present. Um, and if we, we. We, um, before building it out, we made sure that um, no disturbances to the to the area was was impacted.
Super, super. That's that's fantastic. Well, let me, let me do this um, so I don't hog the whole time. Um, which I've been doing is, first off, board members, anybody else have a question that's come up while we were talking here? Okay, let's let's open it up for um any questions that from our guest homeowners here. Does anybody have a question?
Yeah, Warren clears the bill. Um, I'd like to ask Randy, uh, do you have a a contact phone number if people. Uh, want any more details from you?
Yes, uh, on that slide, there was our email address. Uh, our phone number. Is nine two eight five seven five, excuse me, seven five seven. Zero nine two five. And then you could ask for me or for Cat or anyone in our group. And we have a website. It's on the, it's part of the county website. And flood control district has a page with uh all kinds of good information. And so you can contact us any one of those ways.
That's excellent. Thank you so much. And and I I'd just like to also say, uh, I think from all of us here. Uh, to county, thank you so much for doing Alamo. It's absolutely wonderful, the page section. Couldn't be better.
I agree, Warren. Good comment. Anybody else?
Randall Barrett.
Hi, Randall.
Hello. My thought ten twenty six. So I had a question for the county on this because. I've heard a lot of complaints from owners and I've had a problems myself with the roads that I access out here that. Um, when the graders are grading, and this includes also what the county grading is doing, but um, the ones that we're paying to grade. Is that unfortunately, the roads are just constantly getting cut down deeper over the years, not built up. And so the areas that the water would. It's historically flow across the road. Um, when they don't open up what I call the ports, which is the the downhill side of of a. Of a ditch or or a um, a natural water flow area, when they don't. Open that back up, when they let the sand just build up like a mountain along the side of the road. When we do get severe storms, it causes the flo- the roads to flood badly. And then that does divert water into areas it shouldn't go. And eventually, when you get enough water, it busts through. And then you have a floodwater that comes through and tries to continue back on the historical path. Are any of those issues going to be addressed as part of this? And solutions and instructions given to graders, including the county and our own graders, that help to leave those open instead of. Clogging them up? Thank you.
And who were you directing that question to, Randall?
To the county, to the um Randy and anyone else.
Yeah, flood control district only looks at mapping the floodplanes. I think actual grading. Of the roads, that's more Sergio or Steve Vest, I believe, could answer that one.
Yeah, I can answer that. If 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 anybody's having any concerns with with something like that happening on a county maintained road, please give us a call. Um, our operators are 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 well um trained and knowledgeable to to open those up if possible. Um, if it's the correct move to make. Um, but if if you guys are seeing something that that you feel is not correct, don't hesitate to call us. Um, we appreciate those calls. We want to do better. We want to continue to to provide the the best service we can. So. We don't mind those calls at all. Give our office a call and 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 our supervisors, our crew leaders will go out and take a look at the area of concern. And and make the changes, changes that are needed if needed.
Thank you. John, did you want to respond to that at all?
No.
Okay. I I do know that um the dip curves and crest curves that are in there are for that reason. Uh, is to keep them in their traditional pathways. And as um Randy was saying earlier, that one of the bigger problems we have is the washes do move around. Um, and so that's, that's kind of a problem. And also you have that sand that comes down like, like you said, Randall, and it. It just changes things around. So um, if there's a problem, I think it'd be the same way. Just report the problem, you know, specifically. Because I know that uh John and and the grader, um, they go out and fix things all the time. Isn't that correct, John?
Yes.
So same, same thing as uh what our county partners were saying, just report it. Any other questions? No more? Board, anything more? No. It it just as a reminder, you think it'll be another year to two years um. Randy, to get to get the study done, then it's gonna take a year, two year to get uh FEMA to reply?
Yeah, yeah, our, we'll submit our information to FEMA next in about a year. And they, they're not very fast. They'll look at it and once they. And they, they're not very fast. They'll look at it, and once they get an approval, then we can start sharing that information. But the maps won't get changed for likely four or five years.
Okay. And, and so, question I thought of when we were talking insurance is, how do the insurance companies get appraised of this? Is there communication with them? How, how does that work?
Cat, do you know how insurance companies get this information?
My understanding is the, the, the flood insurance has changed dramatically in the last couple of years. I believe it's more the mortgage companies that would be notified whether or not a property or a structure is inside or outside the high-risk area, outside the floodplain. And then, they contact the insurance company. My understanding is the, what we call the flood insurance rate map has nothing to do with flood insurance anymore. It's, it's, what, flood insurance is now based on so many factors we don't even know about. And the mortgage company is the one that's going to determine whether or not it's required. Whether, whether or not it's in or out of that floodplain and whether or not it's required.
Okay, good, good. And then, Randy, could, could, would it be possible for you, for you to share your slides back with Melissa or Kelly? And we could get those up on AppFolio? Would that be possible?
Yeah, I can email you. This is a PDF version or a PowerPoint version, either one.
Melissa, what do you think?
I'll defer to Kelly. PDF or PowerPoint?
The PDF is fine.
Okay.
I think, I think that'd be really helpful for our owners to be able to go on AppFolio and look more closely at those maps.
That'd be great. I'll, I'll send you an email, Randy, so that you've, you've got my contact.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
All right, last chance for questions.
Could, could I add one more thing?
Yeah, sure.
If you go to the Flood Control District website, there is also a public FEMA map viewer where you can either look up your parcel by the parcel number, your last name, or your address. It's the property address.
Okay.
If you have any issues with that.
That was on, on the county website, go to the flood planes.
Yep.
Okay, very good.
County website, Flood Control District, and then, there's a, I believe it's an orange button that says.
Okay.
Nope, there's no button anymore. It's a FEMA flood map viewer. It's got a map.
That's okay. We can direct people. Okay, thank you.
All right.
If you have any, anybody has any questions on that, just give us a call. We can walk you through it.
Okay.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay. With that being said, I, I want to thank Randy and Sergio and Feth for doing this and, and bringing us this information. Anything that, that happens along the way, feel free to give us a call if we can help you, if we can run down any information, or if you want us to distribute information. We're all kind of all in this together. And we appreciate the hard work you guys do. It helps us, for all of us that live out on that ranch, to know that you're watching over it. So, thank you for doing that. And with that, we'll say goodbye to everybody, and we'll talk again soon. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Meeting's adjourned.